The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Farmington Town Council meeting and ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I might ask for public comment, and if you'd like to address the council, come to the podium. You have five minutes and just give your name and address, please.
Hi. My name is Patty Gonzalez, 1457 Farmington Avenue, and I'm here tonight because I would like some clarification as far as videotaping these meetings and the Board of Education These are taped, but the Board of Education are not. Is that correct? Or do you not know?
They're both taped, but they don't tape public comment.
Public comment, either one?
No, ours is taped. Ours is -- our whole meeting is taped.
What we're saying here is because I'm trying to amicably resolve some issues that I'm having with the school district, and I've been told the only way to resolve them is to file a lawsuit against Farmington, a federal lawsuit, a CHR complaint, the Board of the State of Connecticut Department of Education, or a state lawsuit. And I'm trying to find out what the chain of command is, is if the Board of Education is ignoring my daughter's civil rights. She's African-American, by the way. She's black. And she's been having a lot of issues because she has 15 study halls in her junior year, and I've been trying to resolve it with the school, and they won't do anything because of our extensive history. And, you know, they've done a lot of passive-aggressive things. They've retaliated against me. I filed a complaint about something that happened at Union School. It was a derogatory picture of what appeared to be his teacher gave. I should have brought it with me so that you could see the picture. She gave him a picture that appeared to be a penis in the mouth. And I filed a complaint with DCF. Then, Union School retaliated against me and filed a complaint against my son's, you know, attendance. And when DCF got it, they looked at it and they realized that I was correct because my son had been getting bullied. So because of that complaint at Union School, we believe that they're being retaliating against me with my daughter, because this is with her, it's been ongoing. And how could a child, you know, have three study halls per day? And they're telling me, oh, we don't have any classes for her. And I don't want to lose my temper because I want her, you know, it's her junior year. I want her to have a future, and I'm trying to work with them, but they won't do anything to help me. So it's like, what do I do? Just, you know, go the legal route, which I'm doing now, but it feels like I'd rather do it amicably so they don't continue to retaliate against her because I'm concerned about her, you know? And it's not fair to give, you know, a child that many study halls. Not to mention, I've complained about internal segregation at Shep versus O'Neal. I volunteer at the NAACP. I'm on their legal redress committee. I was at the NAACP fundraiser Friday night. We met a lot of politicians. We talked to them. And people that spoke to me realized, they said, you know, you have a problem. You have to solve it. No child, whether she's black, white, or Hispanic, or whatever, should have that many study halls. And, you know, they're guilty of vicarious liability. You know, they're violating state and federal laws. They're discriminating against my child. But I believe genuinely that it's because of me and my aggressive nature. I'm very forthcoming. You know, I'm not, I don't keep my mouth. I've seen the, you know, every year, there's 20 African-American kids in her sophomore year. They're always together. They're educated together. I filed several complaints last year. One teacher never showed up. So the child, one of the kids in her class tried to jump out of the window. I told Bill Silva, I constantly, I call him. The guy never calls me. He never returns my calls. He doesn't communicate with me. And I'm trying to do this amicably, and because they want to age her out of the school district on it without a proper, you know, fair or equal education, I'm frustrated. And I feel like, you know, a lot of other parents have the same issues. They have to fight for their children to get classes. But why should minorities have to fight so hard? This is supposed to be a fair, I mean, I've read your policies. I read all your biographies before I came here. You know, I know you're an attorney, and I've read all your biographies because I wanted to know your backgrounds. And I think that you should be able to hopefully advocate for me, or, I mean, should I just continue doing what I'm doing? What's your opinion?
Well, let me just say, when public comment is to comment to the council.
Right, but I read--
We don't have a back and forth now.
Right, so then, okay, well, let me ask you this last question. So the Board of Education doesn't answer to anybody. They're independent. So if I file the lawsuit, it doesn't concern you, but it's still town money. You know what I mean? So I would think it'd be interesting to try to advocate to resolve it amicably. You know, and that's my, that's the issue that I have, is like, I'm trying to do it for my daughter's future so that she gets the classes that she needs. Even if I have to pay for the class, she wants personal finance. She wants certain classes. If I have to pay for them and they won't give a tour, I'll do it during the summer. But with 15 study halls, there's plenty of room to add something. And that's my frustration. I thought you guys should know this so that maybe you can communicate with Kathy Breder, Lori Singer, whoever is involved in the issue, or Bill Silva, and, you know, just say, hey, all this person wants is for her daughter to have, you know, classes to fill her slots. I mean, it's not fair. And like I said, I'm extremely frustrated, but I'm trying to do it at the lowest level possible, but I'm not getting anywhere. So that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kirk Prelland from 37 Red Coat Lane. I just have three items. First, it's been over three months since the high school referendum did not pass on June 15th. Can you please give us an update on any steps the town council is taking to address the high school deficiencies? Number two, the town council voted on July 11th to request the resignation of Justin Bernier from the building committee. Can you please give us an update on the status of that request? Number three, many people have voiced their concerns during public comment via email about John Landry's PAC and the use of misinformation to mislead the public during both the high school referendum and the Republican primary campaigns. I've yet to hear a public reply from Mr. Landry, a current town council member, or any of the other members of his faction. I feel that senior citizens are especially susceptible to misinformation since his PAC is funded primarily by retirees and nonresidents. I believe we deserve an explanation from Mr. Landry and the other members of his PAC. According to SEC Form 20, thousands and thousands of dollars were reimbursed to Mr. Landry directly by his PAC, and I believe these disclosures need to be made public. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Yes, please. Thank you. My name is Amanda Strauss, and I live at 16 Townsend Road, and I'd like to discuss an agenda item for tonight, which are the lights. The LED lights, the replacement, the addition or replacement, I'm not sure which one it is, of light poles, as well as the conversion to LED lights. So basically, my position is that I object to this on a number of, for a number of reasons. One is, an incandescent light bulb has a Kelvin output of 2,400 Kelvin. That means it contains far less blue. Is it, whose computer is this?
I'm sorry. It's mine. I can move it through.
Yes, please. Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry. Okay. It contains far less blue and far more yellow and red wavelengths than what does a halogen or an incandescent bulb. The white LEDs that are being retrofitted throughout the country have two problems, according to the American Medical Association. The first is discomfort and glare. Blue light scatters more in the human eye than the longer wavelengths of the yellow and red, and obviously, I'm reading directly from the AMA's quotes. And that can damage the retina. If you would like to see how that appears, you can, I was going to say you have two examples, but now you have three because there's LED lights here around the school. You can stare into the light of your washing machine if you have any of the LED lights that come on, and you can see how much glare that produces. Some of you wear glasses. Some of you don't. I'm assuming none of us in this room is, has cataracts. It's of an age to have cataracts, although, who knows? But all of this causes glare on the windshield and into the eyes. And it is really becoming a major problem throughout cities and towns within the country. I object to the conversion of the LED for that reason, as well as for the reason that it's used primarily in high crime traffic areas where you need an excessive amount of light. By placing them here in Farmington, you produce an ambiance or give off the effect of that there might be a crime situation here in town. In addition to which, we are trying to preserve some of the beauty of the Town of Farmington, some of the historic value of the Town of Farmington. Some of the decisions that I've been seeing that have been made from a design standpoint are compromising that situation. I have no idea what the new, that takes care of the bulbs, and I'm certainly happy to discuss the Kelvins with anybody in more detail if they choose at a later date. You're also welcome to call me about that. But the structure of the lights themselves, I have no idea what they look like, so I can't specifically comment on them, but I can specifically comment on the lights that are on the bridge on Route 4, and if there's, if they're supposed to look like that, I don't know. But it is not historically accurate to not only this era, this country, much less the fact that these are commercial, lower socio-economic lights from back in London, back in the 1700s. So I think there needs to be a cohesive design statement for the town or a cohesive mission statement, you know, depicting the design, and I would, again, truly discourage the use of LED lights. I understand that it saves money as far as the expenses of the electrical output, but you also have the upfront cost, and more importantly, sometimes you do have to compromise a bit on money when it comes to the entire ambiance and look of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay. We will move on to D1. Explore Farmington. Rose.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with many of you, and I know many of you have been receiving updates over the past about nine months concerning this initiative that the Economic Development Commission has embarked on, but I thought that tonight we would give you guys the first peek at it. We're very excited about it, and we figured you guys should be the first adopters, so to speak.
We hope so.
Yes, we hope so, too. So I thought I would start off by just giving you a little bit of a review, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And the Economic Development Commission has the ability to really have very good feedback about how our businesses are feeling, how our residents are, and that's done through a robust business visitation program. And we visit about 12 businesses a month at least. And so when you visit these businesses, you're able to really ask them what's working, what isn't working, what do you wish for? And it became very clear that a lot of challenges that maybe some of us are having are, have been tied to the way we communicate. I think many of us realize that, I thought I was going to have my little cellphone with me, but I forgot it. I'm not of the area that I don't go anywhere without it. But most of us have this little cellphone, and that's what we are tied to, and that's the way we're communicating now. So many times, I would visit a business and they would say, you know, we have a lot of new employees, but they're not from Farmington. They're not from Connecticut. In fact, some of them are not even from the United States. So how can we make sure that these new employees are connecting to our community? How do we make sure they know about the Hillstead? They know where to get the best pizza? They know how to get a babysitter? And things of that nature. And in the past, a town many times had a guide that they would print, but those guides very quickly became obsolete. They weren't current. A restaurant may close. A new store may open. And so the printing of them, and a lot of us aren't walking around anymore with maps or with guides, for that matter. So it became apparent to us, the Economic Development Commission, that we should do something, that something needed to be done. We wanted to make sure our community was really engaged and as well as our business community. So we sent out a request for proposal. Well, we actually contacted eight local PR marketing firms, and we asked them to submit some proposals to us. Of the eight that we had, three chose not to give us a proposal because they just felt our budget was a little bit limited, given what we were asking. But we did receive five excellent proposals, and of the five, the commission chose the top two. We had them come in and be interviewed, and I'm happy to say they unanimously recommended to our town manager that Civic Lift with its creator, Evan Dobis, should be the one to help us solve this dilemma. So Evan came back and met with our town manager and also our staff from her office, Anna and Kat, who are, as you could see, one of our most energetic and youngest employees. So they are very adept at all this. I'm learning so much from them, and I'm thrilled that they're helping make sure this initiative goes off to a great start. So we agreed, and Evan was hired. And Evan is a creator of Civic Lift, which is a firm which is really helping all municipalities. Their goal is to make sure that they have good communication channels with using what all of us are using right now in terms of communication, that little phone. So without any further ado, Evan, if you would come up and give the council a little bit of an overview?
Sure. Great. Open things work. So thank you, Rose, for the introduction. Good evening. Thank you for having me here today. As you said, my name's Evan Dobis. I'm the founder of Civic Lift, and I've been working with Rose and Anna and Kat for the past few weeks, trying to essentially harness the many things that Farmington has to offer. Excuse me. So when I say harness, I mean finding out everything that is happening in town, the assets that you have here, the resources that you have, and basically improving the visibility of them. So directing them toward, through a channel that is, that Rose referred to, you know, the way the modern citizen expects it. So, and what I mean by that is, you know, websites, online, and on your mobile devices. So, and we're talking, you know, the assets in town are, I'm thinking, are, you know, interesting places to eat, the events your local businesses are having, the many options for afternoon getaway, fun things to do with your family. You know, the good thing is, is that there is no lack of those things in Farmington. Farmington is full of them already. And what is lacking is the awareness of just how much there is. So if we take a step back for a minute, we can think of all the moving parts that make up the community. We have events, and schools, and businesses, park and rec, town hall. There's a lot, and not only that, they each probably have their own website, or maybe their own communication channel. Maybe they're using newspapers. So what you will notice is that the information is there, but it's quite fragmented, and it's hard to access. Are we going to ask residents and visitors to hunt down all of these sources of information to keep themselves informed? That's pretty unrealistic, because it's kind of silly to say, but as Rose touched on, the technology is so good and everything is so accessible now that community information doesn't really, struggles to hold up with that standard. So it's just a matter of connecting this information and putting it where people want it. The truth is, the modern citizen himself informs himself in a different way, and so communities also need to change as well. So what Civic Lift does is it takes all of the moving parts, and it creates a single cohesive channel, and it makes it much easier for the modern citizen to consume and much more in line with how they expect to find information. It's online, it's on the mobile device, and it's all based on their personal preferences. So it's a challenge when residents don't know where to go for that one single source of community info because it usually doesn't exist. And when information is hard to find, it usually ends up not involving residents enough to discover it, and it has an unfortunate effect on the local economy. The solution that we've come up with is, it's kind of like a new breed of an infrastructure, so to speak, specifically put in place for community engagement, so we can leverage Farmington's existing assets and qualities and improve its visibility by promoting it through the channels that people are already using. And we need to do all this while keeping in mind the personality of Farmington and matching the local culture, so to speak, and being a part of it and giving the adequate control to you, the people who actually live and work here. So what we, Rose, Anna, Catherine, and I, are building is, we're trying to create an environment that serves up its own opportunities. Once we've achieved this tipping point, we can expect a significant increase in community activity to attract new businesses and to improve the connection by improving the flow of information. So, does it work? Well, I've been at this for a good four years now, and before now, I was running essentially prototypes and trying to prove my own concept. And we had five Connecticut towns that went along with our prototype, and so we had a lot of ability to test and find features that worked and get a lot of feedback from our users. And so what we've created now is the result of all of that exposure. And what we came up with is a piece of software that is proving to have a pretty significant level of engagement. So in those five towns, we averaged 68% of their population becoming users of the site within the first year. And a lot of the reason why I think this is so, this is picking up so much steam is because the traditional approach for a web design company, for example, would spend all the time building out this website and building out the asset, and then it's the build it and they will come mentality. But us, we have the platform, so that allows us to focus specifically on promoting this platform, because that's what's really going to get people to come to the site over and over. And so people began to use these sites regularly, in some cases, daily. Businesses had the perfect channel to reach their neighbors. They were all over this, and they promoted their events, their locations, and it was all free for them to do so. So the more they submitted, the more the community visited the website, so it was just this really nice snowball effect. So as I said, we've been building the new software, and the Town of Farmington being the innovative, forward-thinking pioneers that you are, you're going to be the first town to have the new platform. And thanks to the Farmington Economic Development, we are happy to launch explorefarmington.com, which will be launching on November 1st, and powered by Civic Lift. So as you said, this is kind of the opening for you guys right now. You can actually go to explorefarmington.com right now, and--
Does anybody--
Are you coming up here, Kathy?
I can help you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can help you. I think you better go.
Yeah.
Evan, while they're getting on, can you tell us what five communities sort of beta-tested this for you?
Sure. It was Torrington, New London, Kent, New Milford, and Tausma. So there's a lot of driving throughout this. So you'll see that we have a place where you could submit your email address.
Is everybody in?
No.
Oh, okay. Won't wait.
I just--
Almost finished.
Does anybody have any questions in the meantime?
They should go to the--
Get early access.
Yeah. The button we're trying to get to here is the, on the bottom--
Get early--
Get early access button. That's the button we opened up for you. So clicking on that will take you to a signup page.
So an email comes to us?
Did you sign up for the newsletter on top there?
I guess so.
Yeah.
Let's try.
Go.
I don't have my glasses on. Got it. Okay.
I think her Wi-Fi's, anyone's on Wi-Fi?
I'm good.
Switch to data.
I'm in the right spot.
You were supposed to--
Okay.
Oh, there you--
No, I just--
Kat, do we sign all on?
Yes.
You have to fill it in, and I'm quick to sign in, and you will--
So bank an account?
Yep.
Remind you?
Yep. Your accounts.
So one of the benefits of this particular site is that all of you will make an account, and then that will allow you to upload information right on the site. So it's not going to require a large amount of staff to keep up this site.
I like the pop-up.
Oh, nice. Me, I'm typing to you right now. I'm on it. So what this is, what you're seeing, there's going to be a two-phase rollout for this website. And right now, we just started the first phase, and what we call is the content rally. So everybody can submit the content, but nobody's going to see the front side of the site first. On November 1st, and it's during the time between then and now, is when we're going to try to get the site full of content, so that when we launch on November 1st and we make a big public deal out of it and we promote it, that it's going to be a full site the second our residents get to it.
Just press return.
Is everybody doing it yet?
We're good.
Great. So you should see two options right now, submit your business and submit your events. Clicking on those is just filling out an online form. So I believe, you know, Rose and I are going to be reaching out to other business owners in town now that this has been opened, you know, encourage them to submit content, and then we'll be able to launch with a very full site, engaging site, right off the bat on November 1st.
How is the access controlled? Like, for instance, you know, Joe, random person signs up, and then just puts in random events, like a block party or something?
Good question. That's actually what I'm getting to right next, right up here. So now that we mentioned we're launching on the 1st, I'd like to focus on the collaboration effort between Civic Lift and the Town of Farmington. There are usually two aspects to launching projects like these that cause the failures. There's been a lot of, actually, a lot of towns will say, why do we need another website? And the reason why is because there is no cohesion between the efforts, right? So the top two reasons for project failure, first off, is lack of content. It's the reason why people go to Facebook every, you know, three times a day, maybe even more, because there's content always changing. But what's also like Facebook is that we don't actually create any of the content ourselves. We just have the platform. So as people submit the content, we then can also offer a curation or moderation. So Anna and Catherine here are actually taking on the role of reviewing everything, every piece of content submitted, before applying it live on the site. So nothing will get through that we don't want to be there. So we have this moderation process.
How do you develop the standards of that? It's very subjective.
Yeah. So Civic Lift, we have our own standards, but we can also imply standards that we've created ourselves. They actually wrote terms and terms of use conditions, and yes, it's difficult to come up with, because it has to be, you know, it's binary, yes or no. So there's some edge cases that we've pretty much accounted for, but, you know, once users really start to use it, there also probably will be some level of case-by-case basis to make sure--
We--
And the reason why is because there is no cohesion between the efforts, right? So the top two reasons for project failure, first off is lack of content. It's the reason why people go to Facebook every, you know, three times a day, maybe even more, because there's content always changing. But what's also like Facebook is that we don't actually create any of the content ourselves, we just have the platform. So as people submit the content, we then can also offer a curation or moderation. So Anna and Catherine here are actually taking on the role of reviewing everything, every piece of content submitted before applying it live on the site. So nothing will get through that we don't want to be there. So we have this moderation process.
How you develop the standards of that? It's very subjective.
Yeah. So CivicLift, we have our own standards, but we can also imply standards that we've created ourselves. They actually wrote terms and terms of use conditions. And yes, it's difficult to come up with because it has to be, you know, it's binary, yes or no. So there's some edge cases that we've pretty much accounted for. But, you know, once the users really start to use it, there also probably will be some level of case-by-case basis to make sure...
I was going to say, is that a process in itself?
Right.
As people go on and as it's used, then you'll have to go in and say, hey, wait a minute, we didn't realize that would come on and now we've got to...
Yeah, we have some...
You know, we can't allow that.
Right. We have some standard policies that we're developing right now, and then we've made it very clear that the policies are subject to change. And so as we, you know, we have some basic rules that we think are good, and then we'll move from there, you know, depending on how it goes.
Yeah, this is a constant, as I said, a constant collaboration between CivicLift and Farmington. And, you know, one of the examples is an out-of-town business wants to submit their business listing to Farmington's site because they're in their footprint. But, you know, that's one of those things where you have to say, no, you know, you're not, you know, the business in Farmington, this is just for Farmington residents. So that was an edge case that we took care of. That showed up early and then we took care of.
The other thing you may want to do, in addition to just touching base with our attorney, is once we have standards, they should be on your site.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so people know that we're not discriminating on one group or another because there's a head or a box that can be opened there.
That's exactly what our plan is. So what we've done so far, we have, we meet weekly, and we've been doing so since, I think, June, I believe, we've been meeting. And so a lot of that was developing all the different policies and procedures. And then we will, once we have finished that, we, which it's almost all done, and so then obviously our town attorney is going to look it over, and then it's going to be part of the site itself. Right now, you can't go on the site without agreeing to the terms and conditions of CivicLift, and then that will also be our terms and condition. And we wanted to do it that way because that way everyone's on the same page, we all know what the rules are, and we can, because I think in the beginning, if you submit an event and then in the morning you're waiting for your event to pop up and it hasn't popped up, you're going to be receiving a message, we're sorry, but your event cannot be posted at this time, please call us, or, you know, if you have any questions. And then we will always be able to refer back to those policies and procedures. So that's a game plan.
I had a couple of those.
No, it's an important question and one that we have struggled with. Every single week, like we think of something else. I'm like, what if? And so it's been interesting to see how it has developed over time. And I fully expect that once it goes live, we will continue to evolve, you know, as the circumstances dictate.
And you probably don't need to reinvent the wheel. I assume there are other similar things. You can talk to other towns and learn a little bit from them, so we're not struggling, you know, ground.
Well, I went ahead and, you know, Googled terms. I Googled terms and conditions on websites, and then it had this whole thing on, this is not, we are not medical professionals, do not take this as medical advice. And I'm like, oh, we hadn't put the medical part in there, so now we're adding that to it. So we are really...
This is why nobody reads them.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Yeah, and we learned a lot, especially about this, you know, the curator model, making sure it's moderated, from these prototypes that we launched. Because at first, it was a little too open. And, you know, we saw some things that were coming in that probably shouldn't qualify as an event, for example. One business, they were having a month-long sale, and so they submitted an event every day of the month as if that was a community event. But if we open it up to that, then it's just going to be...
Never-ending.
Yeah, it's going to be never-ending and nobody's going to use it because it's just going to be overwhelming. So it's the curator part, an aspect of it. Not only is it a moderation thing, but it's also a promotion thing. We're going to be working with them to promote the site, you know. We've made a Facebook page already.
Instagram.
Instagram, yeah. And if there is...
You're younger than us.
Is it Insta, Insta, or Rinsta?
Sorry? Oh, I don't know. And, you know, when an exciting piece of content comes in, for example, maybe we'll promote it through Facebook. And so that ongoing promotion and the ongoing aspect that it's always relevant content to that moment in time, I think will be a really compelling aspect, a really compelling reason to go to this site every day potentially. And this kind of brings me to my, to the next reason for project failure. Of course, everybody else is one lack of funding. But this is where it gets really interesting for me and for us because not only does CivicLift offset its own costs, but if we all stand behind this site officially and collaborate together and promote ExploreFarmington.com together, we can actually make it profitable for Farmington. And so how do we do that? This is through our ROI program. The ROI program is essentially a built-in sustainability model. My background is in web design. I've launched many sites without any type of sustainability model to it. And sustainability is both relating to content and, of course, the funds required to keep the site going. So how this works for ExploreFarmington.com is the site itself has numerous revenue-generating features on it, one of which is the premium business listing. So any business could submit their listing for free. If they wanted to upgrade their presence on our site, they can actually pay for a premium business listing. So the revenue, there's also sponsorship opportunities that we've opened up for businesses. So any of the revenue generated from these features is actually split with Farmington, with the town. So the more activity on the site, the more profits there are to share. And this is how your commitment to getting behind ExploreFarmington.com really pays off. Because, excuse me, and we're here to work with you, since CivicLift won't be creating content ourselves, as I said, we get to spend time on promotion and making sure everybody knows it exists, making it a household name essentially for residents of Farmington. And that makes everyone involved, you know, a beneficiary, the town of Farmington itself, the users of the site. And as a result, we create our own sustainability. And in this way, CivicLift can end up paying for itself. And once it does, we aren't going to just stop once the site's paid for. We're going to continue to share the revenues, the profits with you, and actually, and the goal is to make this an actual profitable thing. So those are the business concepts. I can actually pull up a demonstration of what the site will look like if we still have that.
It's up to...
Yes. Yeah, I think what would be helpful is just kind of, I think that's what you just said, just showing how this works.
Yeah.
Like give a sample of, you know, how it works, what people are posting, things of that nature.
Certainly.
We talked about this at the breakfast. So it's a $5,000 upfront fee that the Economic Development Committee is paying for. Then you get half of whatever the upgrade is.
Well, the...
But is there a yearly fee too?
Yes.
Is that $5,000 every year?
It's $8,000.
$8,000, okay.
And then the goal is to, first of all, everything is free on the site. So all businesses will have the opportunity to have a completely free listing. If they choose to do premium listing, which we chose a very reasonable amount, $250 a year. And what a business will receive then is actually their own website on our site. So they're on the map, as you'll see in a little while, their little icon will be a little bit larger. And a regular business listing, a free business listing, will pop up the name of the store and a telephone number and an address.
Yeah.
Right there.
So it's a title, a short description, and then contact information and hours of operation.
Right. But a premium listing for the $250 a year not only will give you an image, a little bit more information, but then that particular business will also have, in essence...
A dedicated webpage.
A dedicated webpage. So especially, we have quite a number of small businesses in town, and they may not have the ability to design their own website, have their own website, or pay to host their own website. So this will really be very helpful. And so at the $250 level, we would only need 60 businesses in town, and we have 2,000 to go premium, and then the site pays for itself.
And it's a yearly $1,000?
Yes.
And it's a yearly fee for the premium listing as well. And we haven't even spoken about the sponsorship opportunities yet.
Right. We have already been approached by a number of people. We do not want this to be filled with ads. So we will not be having any ads on the site. But we will have some sponsorship opportunities. For example, on the front page, you'll see that it has in pretty big letters Explore Farmington. So we are, you know, developing different levels of sponsorship, that it could be Explore Farmington brought to you by company ABC. And so those types of sponsorships will go all the way back to a fund to be able to continue this, and it could sustain itself.
Now, when you say a company will have their own website within the website, do you really just mean it's more of a detailed listing for that company?
It's like a dedicated page. So this page right here...
A landing page.
Yeah. This page right here is just for, in this case, the sample business name, it came up, North 50 Gallery.
Right.
And so if they have events uploaded to our calendar, they can, that will automatically show up. They can put all their contact information and social media accounts, they can upload numerous videos and photos and give a full-length description, and of course, business hours. And so, you know, for somebody who's just targeting Farmington and knowing that this is specifically for the Farmington footprint, this is a really cost-effective way to market just to them. I did, in two of our pilot sites, we had two small businesses that were, one was a yarn shop, for example. And so she's not trying to market outside of her footprint. So for her to spend $250 a year for a website instead of spending thousands of dollars and having it be on the world wide web, you know, that's a big difference. And we were able to measure her impact for her, and she thought it was a good deal for her. So that's the economic development aspect of it, right? That's the business support that we put out there for the site. And so far, we've just spoken really about the places, but thinking about the business events that happen throughout town. This section is the calendar, of course, and each one of these events has been submitted by a user of the site. So it comes up in chronological order, of course. You know, it's not going to show last week's events, it's going to be, you know, always updated automatically. Each of these events get their own dedicated page as well, so it can be easily shared by social media, by the organizer. Full description, you know, all the printed information, full description, contact info, the ability to get directions right from the page itself and to contact the organizer.
Evan, can you remind me now? Okay, so this is the beer tour. Remind me, okay, so one of our... What? Where is it going to be? One of our restaurants is having some kind of special, whatever that is, it's an event at their restaurant. Can they post something like this?
Yes.
So again, with the economic driver on this, it's not only they're having a spot on the web, they can actually post their events on this.
Exactly.
And that's free for them.
That's free for them to do it.
And that was one of the limitations. We did, I think, as a town, such a great job updating our website. But at the end of the day, it's still a town website that you do business. You find out how to get your dog license, or what's, when are the taxes, you know, what, where do you send your tax money, things that are very municipal in nature. But it really isn't appropriate to say, you know, Cure is having an open mic night. And you're not going to put that on the community calendar on the town's website. But that might be something that a lot of people would love to know when there's an open mic. So we are going to allow businesses to put their events. And the only caveat we're going to have is if a business is having, you know, let's say it's a yoga studio, and every Thursday they have, you know, yoga, a yoga class, well, that's not going to appear, you know, anything that's part of their normal routine of business won't appear. It's really when they might be having a free outdoor yoga in the park night, then that would be inappropriate. And again, we'll work with all the businesses to make sure they understand the difference.
And then, I don't think you're going to, maybe you'll get to it, but one of the things when you described it to me, which I thought, how that works is that then for the resident, you can sign up for what kind of events you like, right? And then, so if you like yoga, and then the yoga event comes up, then you get alerted of all the yoga events, right?
Correct. So a key feature to a lot of, you know, Facebook and Twitter is that it's actually curating the content based on your preferences. So the system will eventually recognize if you've been to an art event before, this user might be interested in future art events. So that actually takes me back to the homepage where this is kind of like a digest of everything that's happening throughout the site, like the front page of a newspaper that shows the first excerpt of each article, and then you can click through if you're actually interested to read more. So we refer to this as, you know, we call it hyper-relevant because right now, this sidewalk art contest that's being promoted, the reason why it's showing up on the top is because this one happens to be happening in 37 minutes. In 38 minutes, this will no longer be on top, and something else that's more relevant at that moment in time will be on top.
Okay. And just before, just so, again, for staffing purposes, the computer does that automatically. It's not like our people are doing that for staffing and everything like that. So it all, just so, I'm clear.
Trying to automate as much as we possibly can and just make it, as I said, hyper-relevant. Yeah, and eventually, we'll be able to tie into other town features. For example, if there's, you know, if we can get sports, your local high school sports teams on there, and maybe you're not a parent and so you don't care about the high school sports. But if you are, and your kids are in the high school sports, yes, maybe we should put that feed directly in here. And we can connect to any local news source. And what's, you know, some people might think I'm kind of shooting myself in the foot by allowing this to be on our site, because you work so hard to get people on your site, why are you immediately sending them off? But Rose said, it's not a municipal website, it's more of a lifestyle platform for the town. And so if we can, if we can just stay relevant and show things that are actually helpful and applicable to each user and have that be an independent, you know, personal experience, I think that this would become a hugely advantageous resource for everybody who either lives here or works here or visits here.
What is your marketing plan? I mean, you had a huge success of 68% of these towns with media going on your site.
Yeah.
How do you make the majority of Farmington know that this exists so they get on the first couple of times?
Yeah, that's a great question. The most, the platform that we leveraged a lot for getting that number was Facebook. And this, yeah, and that's why we created our own Facebook page. And so Facebook, of course, has adoption that, you know, we're not trying to replace Facebook for Farmington residents here. You know, it's in our belief to not try to, you know, change the ecosystem on people. People will not change ecosystems, they're not going to all of a sudden give up Facebook. So we use Facebook, and we make, we made our own Facebook page. And a few events that were uploaded, for instance, in Torrington, they were redoing the fireworks. They were having the fireworks show, and they hadn't had it for so long, so we made a big deal about it. You know, it's a community event, and it's a large event. So we spent 30 bucks on Facebook to promote this post, and it links right back to our site. So that generated a lot of, oh, what else is on this page? And then so they would browse through it. But we also did the traditional methods. We had a really fun launch party. We invited press, you know, we did press releases. We, I sent emails out to the business owners I knew in town and the list that we got from the town to communicate with them and say, hey, this is here for you. And generally, I think people are just hungry for this kind of info. And if you're showing businesses, hey, advertise yourself here for free, we're exactly targeting your footprint.
They're not going to listen.
Yeah. Yeah, they take it.
Now, Amy, it's funny because that was, that continues to be my question at every weekly meeting. How do we make sure that everyone's going to know about this and be able to use it? And so the girls are assuring me that's not going to be a problem. But I, you know, I had to like prove it to myself. So we did one, I did a post on my LinkedIn page that, I mean, I've had LinkedIn for I don't know how long, and I barely use it. So I went ahead and I did a post, the girls helped me with it. I couldn't believe it. In three days, LinkedIn sends me a little report, 1,500 people have seen your post. I mean, how could that be? But that's how quickly it happened. So, and it got reposted and reshared or whatever, all the things that it did. And so it's funny because now more people are, you know, are saying, oh, yeah, I've heard about Explore Farmington. And we can, and one of the other very cool tools that this particular website has, it will be able to give us reports, how many people are visiting the site, who's visiting the site. The businesses will be able to get that information. And...
And if your business that submitted an event, you could see how many people went to see that event, or how many people clicked on your profile page. So we're also giving valuable metrics to them as well. And more long-term, to answer your question, fortunately for initiatives like this, these local-based initiatives, companies like Google really favor the local results. So assuming that that makes it more relevant for people doing a search for something So assuming that that makes it more relevant for people doing a search for something as vague as, if they're on their cellphone and they're in Farmington, they Google events, our site will tend to come up, because we are, we have content that's always being updated, so we look relevant, and we are right there, you know, in the, in the area, the geographical area that the person is conducting that search in. All these things are taken into account for Google, and fortunately, they really favor local-based initiatives. So showing up for vague searches like that is also part of the marketing strategy, as far as I'm concerned.
Now, what determines a business? Like, for instance, is it brick and mortar only? Is it in-home businesses? Or if, you know, Joe's got a summer landscaping company that he wants to make a couple hundred bucks on?
Yeah. One of those edge cases is those businesses that are service-based and don't necessarily have a storefront that they want to promote. What we are going to, this isn't implemented for, for version one right now, but what we're going to implement is to have a, they're going to be included in the directory, but not, not pinpointed on the map. So if somebody's still doing a search for lawn service, it'll still come up, but it won't be a pin on the map. It'll just be a listing for them.
And now what if Joe goes off to college and no longer has the lawn service?
Yeah. This is where the, the value of the curators come in, and the, and the fact that we have local people here who would have their, they would be tapped into that kind of update. If they know a store closes, I wouldn't know, but they probably would. So yes, there's going to be some irrelevant stuff that, that hangs out there, but we have people who are constantly on it, trying to improve that. And that's miles ahead of a printed directory, for example.
And it'll be linked on the Farmington site, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
That's a great idea.
And we're also going to link our town site on here, too.
Other questions or comments?
So tell all your friends.
Link us on Facebook.
Yes, like us on Facebook. Look at our Instagram account.
Notifications every time an account is made too, so I'll know.
Oh. Uh-oh. So Rose, we are signed up, but it's not launched until November 1st.
Right. So everyone, we're going to, so you guys are signed up now. So what does that mean? You have an account. If you have a business and you wanted to go ahead and, and fill out your information about your business, then it's going to be on our map, and we're going to, that's what we're going to do for the next month. Really tell all the businesses. Help them sign up, because what we want to do on November 1st, we're, there's going to be an event that we're partnering with the Farmington Library. And it's highlighting, they have a wonderful resource for all businesses. It's called their A to Z database. And so anyone who has a Farmington Library card, right now, is able to go online and receive all the information of every single business, not only in Farmington, but in Connecticut. I think it's in the whole US. And that database is an extremely expensive tool if you were, if you wanted to, to get that information yourself. So Farmington Library has had that available for a number of years. So they partnered with us, and they are going to be having a speaker come on November 1st to tell businesses all about this database. And then after that, during that program, we are then going to tell everybody there that we're live, and by that time, we'll have all our press releases. Everyone will know. So we really, for the next month, really have to work very, very hard, and we hope we can count on you to tell all your friends, because once that November 1st launch date, then the, the whole site will be populated with businesses and events, and people will start using it.
And that's always a big surge, obviously. Right when we launch, everybody wants to go check it out. So it's, you know, to have your stuff on there for them to see when they get there is advantageous for you. And keeping in mind that this is, you were mentioning the annual fee, the, this is a web application that we are continuously improving and making new features for, and what we have slated for probably middle of next year is to begin working on the, the mobile application. So it's mobile-ready now. It will work, this, this website will work just fine on your, on your mobile device, but we'll also have a native mobile app that we can have users utilize. And then, I think it's going to be more utilized on a mobile platform than it is on a website. You know, that's, that's the trend. That's what the truth is now. So, and to think of what we can do in terms of improving the context of things by knowing where, you know, if you're standing here and you're doing a search for coffee, you know, it'll show you around where you are, the coffee places around you. And if you give each of those business owners who own coffee shops in town, the ability to edit their listing and to promote their business through that, and to see how many people are actually finding you that way, you know, I think it's going to be really a step in the right direction in terms of getting the visibility up for all the wonderful things that are already happening here.
And they see that because each business has its own dashboard? Or how do they get access to that information?
Show them the map.
Yeah. Actually, right here, the, where, actually, you have access to this part. There's, you know, when you submit your events and you submit your businesses, you'll have all of your pieces of content here, so that you can, if you change your phone number, you can edit it yourself. If you need to cancel an event, you could do so yourself. So it's constant, it's something you can constantly manage and keep, keep up to date as the business owner.
So they have burgers, beer, cocktails at Torrington City Hall? Rose, why are you here? Why'd you ever leave?
All this sample content that I made, I should probably look through that a little closer.
We've been having a lot of fun with our own content, testing it, so.
That's right. Yes, you have.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thanks for your time.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. All of you for getting this underway. Very exciting.
Now we'll go back to state budget. D2, presentation of state budget update.
So there isn't any change in the state budget situation since we last reported to the council a week ago. So we don't really have anything to report. We're hoping that something's going to happen, I mean, obviously, very soon. I'm not thinking that's going to be the case, but, you know, the drop-dead date for a lot of municipalities with their large amount of funding that they're supposed to receive is October 1st. So I know that the group has been, at least what I've been reading in the paper, they would like to do something. But, you know, it's been very silent, as you probably have been reading the paper over the last week. I think they're going to have some, hopefully, maybe doing some different things with the hospitals tomorrow. But other than that, really, we don't have anything else to report, but we will, if anything of significance, we will definitely be talking about it at our next council meeting, and if we need to meet before then, we'll, we'll, I'll talk to Nancy about that.
Okay. Yeah, we just had, just a little update today that they were talking about the hospitals they came on. And they were hoping, I guess they were discussing how they would, they hoped to finish Friday, it would have to be by sundown. So that's still an option, but how serious that is, who knows? And I'm actually going into CROG tomorrow at noon for executive meeting, so we'll see if there's any discussion in Hartford then. So we'll keep everybody posted.
And I just left at your places, just, I think, Amy, you had asked me a question about that. So we're, we're going to be looking at some of our revenue and some different things. There's a lot of information, and it's, again, it's, we, we have a pretty good database on our grants and our revenue too, but sometimes it's, it's difficult, because a lot of revenue is one-time revenue that we happen to get. Like, so if we have a Rails to Trails grant, it comes in that year, and so there's, there's different things that have happened. But I think the one thing you can take out of my chart is that, over the last couple of years, the, the state funding has been very unpredictable, and that hasn't usually been the case. It usually has been that we go with the governor's numbers, and the numbers are usually better than that. But that has not been the case over the last two budget cycles for us, so.
But we've been looking at this chart, I mean, the total revenue exceeding budget, and for the past five years, we've been in good shape.
Yes.
And that all is going into fund balance, right?
Right.
So that's helped us bring that number up.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's actually extremely positive.
Yeah. And that's been, as you guys know, is that's been a very deliberate effort on our part to raise the, the fund balance. And also, you know, there has been different things where we've had different revenue sources, and we've had some pretty good property tax collection rates and some various things. And we do, in general, fund our revenues very conservatively.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Kathy. E1.
I move to approve the attached resolution concerning a lease purchase agreement for the acquisition and conversion of various streetlights throughout the town.
Second.
And I left the attached resolution at your places. And Joe? Where's Joe? Joe, could you maybe give us an update on this? How this resolution? How we're going to finance this?
As you probably recall, earlier this year, in the spring, you authorized the acquisition and conversion of our, our streetlights, and that's being negotiated now with Eversource. It hasn't been finalized. I guess the contract hasn't come through yet. In the meantime, we indicated that we would be acquiring or paying for this whole project through lease financing. We went out to bid, sought proposals for lease financing. We opened them on September 15th, and we received some pretty good rates. We hit it just right, and TD Bank actually came in with a low rate at the 1.8, it was 1.87 percent. We, we're running this by our bond counsel right now to make sure that the financing, what they're proposing in their, in their package, their financing package is, is doable and acceptable. And what you have, unfortunately, you have two resolutions. In the original packet, we gave a very abbreviated resolution. Bond counsel felt that that wasn't an adequate resolution, so he, he rewrote the resolution, added some items to it. It still has the gist of what you have in your abbreviated resolution. It just clarifies our intent in terms of this, this lease financing being subject to, not being subject to income tax. It is a tax exempt financing, indicating the town's intent to possibly advance the funds for the project and then get the money back through the lease financing. We will not do that, but he did leave that open for us in there. So basically, what he did is he took the resolution, and he, he made it into what we would normally, you would normally pass for a bond resolution. That's really what it does. So I apologize, there was some confusion. I didn't think he was going to make that many changes, because I thought it was a simple lease financing. He decided that because of the dollar amount, the million dollars, we should add more to it, and that's basically why he expanded on it. So if you have any questions about the, the lease financing in particular, it is seven years. We talked about either five or seven years. It works at, the payback works better on a seven-year basis, so this would be a seven-year financing. It is a million dollars. There is a prepayment penalty, but we wouldn't, we would not pay back on this anyway. And we, eventually, what would happen is the savings from the electricity savings would, would actually pay back the lease itself.
Right. So the whole premise, again, which we talked about a few meetings ago, was that we would be purchasing the streetlights. We're going to lease finance them.
Right.
The money, the savings from the streetlights, the electricity is going to pay for, after seven years, and then we're also going to have savings that we're going to be putting into the budget over the course of, you know, the 20 years, right?
There should, in theory, in theory, you should have savings over the next 20 years of, of quite several million dollars. Basically, what you're, you're doing is, there's two functions, two, two sources of savings. Streetlights, unlike your lights, the electricity you pay for, you pay two charges to, for your, for streetlights. You're paying for the maintenance of the lights from Eversource, and that's one rate, and then you pay your electricity rate. So, and actually, there's three, three payments. The delivery to Eversource, the maintenance of the lights from Eversource, and then the electric, and then the electrical rate, the actual supply rate. So what you're doing by buying the lights is you're taking the maintenance out of, factor out of it. Then what you're doing by converting the lights to LED is you're saving money on the electricity costs. So what you're looking at is the potential of going from $150,000 a year in electricity, or payments on streetlights every year, to about $60,000 a year. So you, you should see considerable savings. Over the first seven years, that's, that savings is going to go back into paying the lease, but once the seven years are up, you're, you'll have, you know, that savings will just be coming back to the town.
Kathy, do you want to? Right. And we had a question during public comment, and I think Shannon has the information. So if, I don't know if you've met with Shannon, but we can go through a list of questions. And I know you and I are meeting tomorrow, so we could talk about that.
Any questions for Joe? Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Great. Thank you, Joe. Thanks, Kathy. Okay. And I have a motion to move to executive session.
I move to executive session to discuss matters concerning the sale or acquisition of real property, and that attendance in the executive session shall be limited to members of the town council, William Wadsworth, land acquisition committee member, and the town manager, at 8:05 PM.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.[1758.16]